Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Barra. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Ziarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, first item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to begin by reminding everyone of the holiday schedule with our business offices. So, in observance of Christmas, our city offices will be closed for business on Thursday of this week and Friday, and then the same for the New Year's holidays. It will be closed on Thursday, the 30th, and Friday, the 31st. So, the good news is this year, since the holiday falls on a weekend, there's no change or disruption in the city's refuse collection services. So, there's no delay there at all. And also, wanted to remind everyone that we are continuing the Christmas tree recycling program. So, after the holidays, you can set your tree out at the curb on your normal trash day to have it recycled. And if you have any questions about our schedule, certainly feel free to visit our website. And I always enjoy this time of the year to highlight some of the charitable work that our employees and departments undertake throughout the season. And so, let me just take a minute to do that. This year, approximately 50 families in Sterling Heights and the surrounding communities received assistance through the city's Holiday Assistance Program. Ten local organizations, including five churches, as well as several numerous individuals, participated through sponsorship of local families. And I wanted to commend our Community Relations Department and their staff for their hard work coordinating the program and working with various entities, including our local businesses and so on, that gave so generously during the season. And as many of you know, we always have the annual Cops and Kids event. That was held on December 12th at the Target store at 16 Mile into Quinder. This annual event is supported by the Sterling Heights Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 118 and the Sterling Heights Police Department, and of course, Target. This year, officers volunteered their time to help 37 children, each of whom spent $120 on toys, clothing, and gifts for their families. And so, we're really proud of that program. It's always successful, and of course, the kids love it. And I also wanted to highlight our Department of Public Works. They held their annual Ken Stempowski Memorial Food Drive. This year, donations included nonverbal food items, 1,200 in monetary donations, 20 frozen turkeys, and other goods. And the food will be delivered to the McComb Food Program, where it's then distributed to various food pantries throughout the county. So, again, I want to congratulate our employees and the departments with these specific programs and for their charitable efforts during the holiday season. And so, that's the good news, and I hate to end on a bad note. But as I've mentioned at the previous council meeting, sooner or later, it is going to snow. So, we do have to start thinking about snow emergencies. And I would like to introduce this evening our Community Relations Director, Melanie Davis, and also our City Development Director, Jason Castor. They're going to talk about the outreach efforts that we're enhancing this year to make sure that everyone knows where to get information about snow emergencies and really instantaneous information as well, and also increased enforcement of on-street parking violations during a snow emergency. So, Mayor, I'd like to introduce, I believe Melanie will be going first.
Yes. Thank you. And to Mayor and City Council, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kajubski, as you mentioned, Mr. Vanderpool, a lot of us don't like to think about it, but that first snow emergency is going to be here before you know it. And so, what we would like to do is just spend a little time going over some of the things that we do every year, and then some of the things that are new this year that we're going to be doing for snow emergencies in the city of Sterling Heights. So, the first thing is, is that we always want to make sure that we notify residents when there is a snow emergency, and we communicate that for a couple of reasons. Obviously, it's to make sure that we clear our streets and make sure that our DPW plows can navigate subdivision streets unobstructed. And obviously, we also don't want our residents to have to dig out their cars. So, we want to make sure they don't get their cars plowed in. And so, we always want to make sure we notify our residents, and we do so in a variety of ways. We, first of all, always send out a press release to local media, and that includes our local print and broadcast radio and TV stations, and it even includes some media that are niche to some of our ethnic communities. So, we work with some of the Kaldean and Middle Eastern American radio and TV shows as well. We also have a crawl up on SH TV, and that crawl stays active the entire time a snow emergency is in effect. And that will show up on Cable Stations 5, 10, and 99, depending on whether our residents have AT&amp;T, Comcast, or Huawei. We also put a ticker up on our website homepage, and that emergency alert also stays up for the duration of a snow emergency. So, anybody that hits our website will see that emergency alert first and foremost at the top. If they scroll down a little bit on our homepage, they'll also see that same press release we send out that also goes up under our news flash on the homepage of our website. So, it'll be there as well. And then, for anybody that wants to find out more information on our website about our snow plowing procedures, or maybe the maps that we have, and to determine which streets are priority streets and which ones get plowed first based on the snow emergency, all that information can be found if they go to sterling-heights.net/snow. So, all that information on our snow plowing procedures can be found there. We also have actual emergency alerts that we send out via email and text message. And for anybody that wants to subscribe to those, they can either put in their email or their mobile number, and they can get an email and/or a text alert for those emergencies. And they can get to that via sterling-heights.net/notify-me. We also put up emergency alert information on our social media. We use primarily Facebook and Twitter for those emergency alerts. So, they'll see them on those social media platforms. And for anybody who is a registered user of our See Click Fix program, our app, we also put a notification out on that app, and they'll see that on there as well. So, those are all some of the ways that we currently communicate and notify snow emergency information to our residents. Now, what's new this year, there are a couple of things. The first thing is, is that we worked to make sure that anybody that received a parking violation last year who was not able to remove their car from the road during a snow emergency, any of those individuals that paid that violation online, we made sure that we took all those emails and subscribed them for our emergency alert system so that this year, all of those individuals will in fact get an email emergency alert for all of our snow emergencies. The second thing is, is we've worked hard to start doing a little bit more public outreach to increase the number of residents that are subscribed to those text alerts or email alerts for snow emergencies. There is a number of ways that we've done this. First thing is, is we've added a new page to our website. Any residents that go to sterling-heights.net/getconnected, on that page, it's a one-stop-shop for all the ways that our residents can engage with us and get information. So, at the very top, the first thing they're going to see is text alerts for emergencies, for emergency notification. Then, they will also have the ability to sign up for our city news emails that go out twice a month. That contains emergency information, but it also contains all kinds of good information on events and activities and initiatives, things that are going on at DPW, all the different city departments. So, we encourage members to sign up for that as well. And then, the last thing they'll see is links to all of our social media channels. So, that gives them a one-stop-shop to get connected to the city and all of the information we provide. The other thing that we did is for this last winter magazine on page four, we included the link information for residents to sign up for those emergency alerts, and that was something that we didn't have in magazines prior. So, we gave them that information. We also added it to our city news email that went out on November 18th and December 9th additions, and will likely continue to do that through the first couple of months of this winter. We also added information on where they could sign up for those emergency alerts on our social media platforms. We also included a new homepage banner on our website. If you hit our website now, one of the first banners you're going to see at the top is a banner that says, "Don't be left out in the cold. Make sure you sign up for those snow emergency text alerts." And it has a directed link. If they click on that banner, it'll take them directly to the page where they can sign up for those emergency alerts. And lastly, what we've done is we've worked with some of our partner organizations in our diverse communities. So, the first two we've started with is the Kaldean Community Foundation, and then also the Asian Pacific Islander Association. And we're working to make sure that we get information about not only how to sign up for these emergency alerts translated and out into those communities, but also try to get them on board to have some pre-information translated so that when a snow emergency does happen, that we can go to those partners and have them get that information out to their communities as well. It's just one additional way that we can make sure that we're hitting as many of our residents where we're trying to meet them where they get their information. So, a lot of times, too, in community relations, we get asked, you know, what can residents do? You know, what can senior residents do? I'm a senior, and/or my neighbor's a senior, and they may not have the physical or financial means to clear their sidewalks and their driveways and get their roads off the car or their cars off the road. So, what we do is we always encourage them to sign up for the McComb Chor program. That's one option for them. And they can do that by calling 586-469-6329 for an application. Now, the challenge is, is the sign-up for that is in end of February, early March every year. So, if they are not able to access that program for this particular winter, we also encourage senior residents to try local churches in the area, or try the United Way 211 Emergency Hotline, and they have just a host of resources that they can provide to them. But they can also, we also encourage them to call Community Relations at 586-446-2471, or they can email cityhall@sterling-heights.net. Because we have started compiling, we have a few volunteers that are able to, you know, help out seniors shovel their snow in the winter. So, we can hopefully pair them with a volunteer or two. And in this instance, that we aren't able to do that, we are also aware of some discounted services that might be an option for qualified residents. So, we encourage them to contact Community Relations, and we'll do our best to pair them up with the resources that they need to get their snow handled. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jason Castor, who's going to cover the information about what we're doing with the ordinance.
Thank you, Melanie. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to be with you tonight to provide an update on snow emergency parking enforcement and highlight some changes to the program. Per city ordinance, during a snow emergency, vehicles are not allowed to park on the street. Keeping vehicles off the streets prevents them from getting plowed in, as Melanie mentioned. It allows the Department of Public Works the ability to clear the streets from curb to curb without that added difficulty of navigating around vehicles. Two hours after a declared snow emergency, code enforcement and the police department start canvassing the streets based on the selected DPW plow mat. Throughout the snow emergency, we remain in constant contact with DPW to make sure that we are staying in front of the snow plows. New this season, issued tickets will be placed in a database and monitored for repeat offenders. A violation will remain on this list for two years. To start the season, we went back previous, into previous seasons, and uploaded about 1,000 tickets in our current database. This list will be referenced when issuing tickets to determine repeat violations and the cost of each ticket. First violation is $25, second violation 100, third and repeat violations are $125. The fine note, the fine amount, will be noted on each ticket. So, when the resident shows up at the counter to pay, or goes online to pay the ticket, they will know the amount that they are required to pay, and it will note if they are a repeat violation, or if it is a first offense. That is all I have for this evening, and I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Mayor and council, just in conclusion, I wanted to thank all the residents that do comply with the on-street parking prohibition during snow emergencies. We have approximately 40,000 properties in the city, and if you assume, assume on average two vehicles per property, some have obviously far more, some less, that's 80,000 vehicles. And we issue about 1,000 tickets a year, so the compliance rate is over 98%. That's pretty good. So, I wanted to thank everyone who does take the time to go out during a snow emergency or in advance of a snow emergency and make sure they remove their vehicles from the street. It is greatly appreciated. I know public safety for sure appreciates it, and certainly our DPW truck plow drivers. So, that is all we have on that topic. Let's hope we don't have many of them. Of course, some of us like the snow, not dealing with it like this, but some of us do like it. And I hope we fare well. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. The next item on our agenda is a presentation of the Nice Neighbor Award. And to help us with that, I'm going to welcome up to the podium Tammy Turgen, who is our library director. Ms. Turgen.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of city council, Mr. Vanderpool, and residents. As a library director, I am thrilled to speak with you tonight about a donation that has been made to the Friends of the Sterling Heights Public Library and recognize the donor with a Nice Neighbor Award. The Sterling Heights Public Library is an integral part of this community. Our mission is to serve as an information center, offering a wide variety of materials and services for education, entertainment, and enrichment in a welcoming and helpful environment. We have such great residents that support the library in so many ways. The Friends of the Library is our biggest supporter, and I'd now like to introduce Kathy Monak, President of the Friends of the Sterling Heights Public Library.
Thank you, Tammy. I am Kathy Monak, and I live at 4380 Honeysuckle Drive, Sterling Heights, and I'm currently the president of the Friends Board. That's better. Good evening, Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, and city council. The Friends of the Sterling Heights Public Library, organized in 1976, is a volunteer nonprofit group dedicated to enhancing and improving library services for our community. Friends' contributions, fundraising activities, and volunteer efforts help maintain and improve library collections, provide new technologies and capital improvements, and support library programming. So, tonight, we would like to thank Kelly Skilin for her thoughtful and generous contribution to the Friends of $1,481.43. We are so happy to nominate her for the Nice Neighbor Award for helping the Friends of the Sterling Heights Library in this way. Thank you, Kelly.
So, I'll just read the award. The city of Sterling Heights, mayor and city council proudly issue this award to Kelly Skilin in recognition of your efforts to assist your community and contributions in making Sterling Heights overall quality of life second to none.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Great for me, too. Oh. There you are.
Thank you very much. Council, we do have a suggested action here. Is there anyone who would like to make this resolution?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
We would like to present Kelly Skilin with a Nice Neighbor Award in recognition for her efforts to contribute in making Sterling Heights overall quality of life second to none.
Support. Moved and supported? Any discussion? Mrs. Sarowski.
Just very briefly, thank you, Kelly. It's very generous, as has been said before, but it's also nice to see that it's going to a really great place, the library and the Friends of the Library. I've been in there. I've bought purchased books. I've donated books. I think it's a wonderful, great place to send it now. Thank you very much. Have a Merry Christmas.
Council, anyone else? Yeah, thank you very much, Kelly. It was a pleasure getting to know you, and I wish you well, and thank you for your continued support of the city of Sterling Heights and a very generous donation. So, you've set a great example, and one that we can all aspire to follow. So, one more big round of applause for Kelly. So, council, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is another presentation, and this is to receive the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. We do have a presentation by our city controller, Nick Mackey, and representatives from Plant Moran. Mr. Mackey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm very happy to be here tonight to present the results of the 2021 financial audit. Each year, independent auditors review our financial statements and our accounting procedures. The audit is a very time-consuming and detailed process. It involves the cooperation of many employees throughout the organization. And I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone that was involved, especially the finance team, who once again have done an excellent job. We prepared a short presentation to review the audit results. The full 153-page audit report has been supplied to city council and is also available on the city's website. To summarize, the audited financial results, the net position of the city, which represents total assets minus total liabilities, has increased by $35.2 million from prior year. Most of this increase is in the governmental activities and is due to the large investment the city has been making into infrastructure, including roads and facilities, as well as investment returns on our pension and OPEB plans. General fund revenue totaled $116 million. General fund expenditures were $113.7 million, which means we were able to add $2.3 million to the general fund reserves, which was greater than projected. This brings our total general fund fund balance up to $32.2 million, or 28.4% of annual general fund expenses. In 2022, we're projected to have a small contribution to fund balance, which will bring our total reserves up to $32.3 million, which is also 28.4% of expenditures. In total, general fund revenues were within 0.1% of budgeted targets and increased $6.3 million, or 5.8% over last year. This increase was due primarily to a 3.2% increase in tax revenue, significantly related to police and fire pension tax, $6.6 million in additional state and federal source revenue, primarily due to COVID relief funding, and was offset by a decrease in investment income of about $910,000, which was due to low interest rates. Total expenditures were 1.3% lower than budgeted, and every city department came in under budget. Expenditures increased by $7 million, or 6.6% from the previous year, and this increase included $3.1 million increase in transfers to other funds for funding of capital projects, including road and facilities, a $1.3 million increase in total pension and OPEB contributions, a $1.8 million increase in personnel costs due primarily to contract wage adjustments and step increases, and a $600,000 increase in health insurance costs. Now, let's look at some activity in our other funds. First, major and local roads. As you can see from this chart, revenue for major and local roads totaled over $20.3 million for 2021. Revenue from the state of Michigan, known as Act 51, revenue totaled $13.6 million, which was an increase of about $1.2 million compared to prior year. The Safe Streets Millage provided $3.6 million for neighborhood road improvements, which is up $84,000 from the prior year, and the general fund provided an additional $2 million to the major road fund this year. Investment in major roads decreased by $5.5 million year over year, with actual expenditures, including bonded funds totaling $9.4 million in 2021. In 2022, budgeted expenditures are $24.1 million, and a large portion of this increase is due to the reconstruction of Mount Road. This year's, excuse me, this year's neighborhood road projects totaled $4.8 million. In 2022, we'll see another $6.4 million in investment. Thanks to the renewal of Safe Streets, over 250 additional neighborhood streets will see improvement over the next 10 years. Investment in parks and recreation continued in 2021 with another $1.8 million in capital outlay. This is a decrease of around $14 million year over year, which is a result of our recreating recreation bonded projects being completed. Revenues were relatively flat, with slightly higher tax revenue, offset by slightly lower investment income, primarily due to less bond proceeds on hand. Expenses outside of capital expenditures were also relatively flat compared to prior years. In the Capital Projects Fund, expenditures totaled $15.1 million in 2021, and some of the highlights included $7.8 million for the new DPW facility, $1.7 million in IT upgrades and improvements, and $1.5 million for vehicles. The 2022 budget will continue to see investments in equipment and facilities. And finally, the Water and Sewer Fund. The Water and Sewer Fund had operational income in the current fiscal year of $3.4 million, primarily due to an extremely dry summer in 2020. Usage was 9.6% higher than estimated and 12.6 higher than the prior year. As you can see from the chart, we've worked to minimize losses in the water and sewer system in the past four years. After experiencing significant losses during the downturn, the current year budget is projected to include an increase to reserves, which is important for future infrastructure improvements. Now, an update on the city's retirement funds. The city has continued to prioritize funding for its three retirement plans. As you may remember, the equities market was still in a downturn as of our prior measurement date of 6/30/2021. date of 6/30/20, and the asset values reflected that market dip last year. As you can see from the chart, the investments have rebounded, and our funding in all of our plans has increased significantly. The Retiree Medical Plan has increased its funding level 22.3% from last year to 78.2% funded. The funding level for the General Employees Pension System increased to 86.1% funded. Both the Retiree Medical Plan and the General Employees Pension Plan are closed to new hires. The funding for the Police and Fire Pension Plan increased to 72% funded, and this is the only plan still open to new hires. Another point of good news is that the city has once again been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, as well as the Distinguished Budget Award. These awards have now been awarded to the city for 32 and 33 years respectively, and again show the city's dedication to excellence in financial reporting. The bottom line is the audit results show the city's budgeting and long-term financial planning is on target. We're continuing to add to general fund reserves, ensuring adequate resources will be available to weather any current and future economic uncertainty, and we are continuing to invest in roads and community infrastructure. And all of this is accomplished while still maintaining the lowest taxes paid per resident when compared to the largest cities in Michigan by population, and we continue to have one of the lowest millage rates in Macomb County. So this concludes my overview, and I would like to now introduce Joe Kowalski, partner from Plant Moran, our independent auditors. They have spent the past several months reviewing our financial records and operations and have issued an unmodified opinion on our audited financial report, which is the highest rating possible.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Mr. Mayor, thank you for having us here today. Esteemed members of Council and City Manager Vanderpoel, it's my pleasure to be here today to talk about the results of the audit on behalf of Plant Moran. And I would like to start the same way that Mr. Mackey did. A big thank you to the city staff. There's about 1,000 hours of audit effort that goes into just a few weeks in the fall. And as you can imagine, that's a lot of touch points with city staff. And the level of effort by Ms. Varney and Mr. Mackey and the entire finance staff is absolutely amazing to watch, because we have several people that are making requests throughout the process, and their level of effort has to ramp up during that process. And I would just really want to thank you for the professionalism, the responsiveness, and being able to allow us to do our job. It's a robust audit process, and very happy to report another clean opinion. So there are three reports that we've issued our opinion on this year. The first would be the opinion on the financial statements, which Mr. Mackey already talked about. That's a clean opinion, and what we call unmodified in the business, and it's the highest level of assurance that you can receive on your financial statements. And so that means that those financial statements can be relied on. As we're doing that audit, one of the things that we're required to do is to evaluate internal controls. And we're not issuing an opinion on internal controls, but we do issue a letter in relation to our evaluation of those internal controls. And if we were to find anything in our audit that would cause us to believe that the internal controls needed improving, we would be required to report that to you in the letter. Happy to report there are no such matters. And that's quite a feat, because there were a lot of headwinds this year, both from systems and personnel-related matters. And the city's finance team was really able to navigate those, and all while maintaining the sound internal control policies and practices that have been put in place over the years. So that's a lot to be proud of. And then, lastly, the third report is the, another thing that was, I think, difficult to navigate is additional federal grants this year. And as auditors, we're required to test the compliance with those grant terms and agreements. And so we did that, and even though there were new grants managed by the city's finance team, we did not have any findings over the compliance related to those grants. And so our opinion is clean on the operation of the grants as well. So all around, a great year, a lot to be proud of, and another GFOA certificate, which is another great accomplishment. And that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Well, Counsel, I can open it up now. We do have a suggested action. From a timing standpoint, should we take that now, or should we? Okay, why don't we do this? We'll take the, we'll make the motion to receive the annual report. If anybody has any questions, they can ask. We'll go from there, all right? So Counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arco.
Resolved to receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
It's been moved and supported. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Mackey or Mr. Kowalski? Well, I would say, I guess I would say it's old hat at this point. I think I've done, this is my 12th or 13th one of these, and they're pretty boring, even by accounting standards. You always just seem to have clean financial statements, and, you know, I know there was some people out in the community that wanted us to audit our finances this year, and I told them, well, we've been doing that for decades, and we always seem to do pretty well on it. So on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Sterling Heights, thank you for the work that you guys do. We appreciate that. I know your team works very hard, and our staff is the best, in my opinion. They just do an incredible job, and it's not just, you know, it's not just exaggeration, I don't think, when we say that. We really have the record to show that we've, we're doing some really outstanding work, and our finance team, led by Ms. Varney. You guys are the best. So thank you, and thank you to Plant Moran. With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
That will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is an ordinance introduction, and this is to introduce the First Amendment.
Can I do that?
What's that?
I think you just did that.
No?
No. No, we didn't. Okay, I'm sorry.
We'll do this one.
Apologize.
It's okay. This is, so this is an ordinance introduction. This is to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. We do have a presentation from our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney. Ms. Varney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, Mr. Vanderpoel, and Mr. Kaczyuski. I am here tonight to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance. The budget is normally amended twice each year, once in December and once towards the end of the fiscal year. The amendment carries forward the unspent funding for projects that were approved in the prior years that will not be fully completed until this year. It also recognizes new grants and items that have come before the council since the budget was adopted, and we have also updated revenue and expenditure estimates due to some changes in expectations since the original budget was adopted. This slide summarizes the proposed changes to the general fund budget since adoption. As you may recall, the adopted budget included a use of fund balance of just over $2.1 million. Since that time, the state has updated their revenue sharing projections, increasing our annual revenue sharing by just over $1.2 million, and this is due to a 15% year-over-year increase in sales tax revenues collected by the state. In addition, subsequent to budget adoption, we received a valuation report from our actuaries on our OPEB plan, which funds retiree medical expenditures. Due to the city's commitment to funding this plan over the last decade and very strong earnings last fiscal year, the recommended contribution for this plan has decreased significantly, and we were able to reduce our contribution this year by $1.2 million. And next, due to the conclusion of the projects funded through recreating recreation, we were able to reduce the general fund transfer to Parks and Recs this year by $425,000. Additional expenditures proposed in the First Amendment include the addition of six critical positions that were proposed in the manpower study at a cost of $488,000. As you may recall from strategic planning last year, the manpower study indicated the need for 70 additional positions over the next several years. Only the most critical positions have been proposed at this time and will be detailed later in the presentation. Changes to the police officer's contract added about $170,000 to the general fund budget, and other miscellaneous increases added about $56,000. The bottom line is these changes have eliminated the projected use of fund balance for the current fiscal year, and we now have a contribution to fund balance of just over $17,000. So as you can see from this chart, revenue sharing has been increasing about 2% to 4% pretty consistently since 2017. This year's increase is the largest we've seen in a while. However, the original estimates from the state anticipated a decrease this year. So although some of this year's increase is probably a one-time jump related to higher spending, it's reasonable to assume that about half of the increase is sustainable. And you can see here that the city's commitment to funding OPEB has been very successful, increasing the funding level from under 9% to almost 80% in just 15 years. And in addition to ensuring that promised benefits are funded, higher funding levels maximize our investment earnings, and that way it keeps contributions consistent and helps them decrease over time. The amended budget proposes the addition of six critical positions that were identified as part of the manpower study. Listed here, positions are proposed in financial services, water billing, assessing, city clerk, information technology, and community relations. As workload levels continue to increase, these important positions will ensure that residents continue to see the exemplary service they have become accustomed to here in Sterling Heights. And even with these proposed personnel additions, Sterling Heights will still have the lowest employee-per-resident ratio of all of our comparable communities. So once again, the net result of these changes is a contribution to general fund balance of just over $17,000. And just as a reminder, this year's budget included a one-time, half-a-million-dollar investment to upgrade all city streetlights with LED lights. This investment is expected to result in an annual savings of nearly $125,000 in electricity costs and has a payback period of under four years. And again, as you just heard in the audit presentation, for the year ended June 21, the city was able to add $2.3 million to fund balance, and that brought year-end fund balance to about $32.2 million, or 28.4% of expenditures. So the current year budget would keep reserves about the same, a very healthy level and well within accepted best practices. So in other city funds, the budget is being adjusted a total of $14.8 million. So of that amount, $5.6 million is to carryover unspent road project funds, $1.2 million in approved and carryforward expenditures for the wrap-up of the facility renovations, $900,000 in approved and carryforward expenditures for the local development finance authority, and the carryover of unspent capital project fund totaled $5.4 million and includes the carryforward of funds for the construction of the new DPW facility, as well as other projects and equipment approved in the prior fiscal year. Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of this ordinance, which is scheduled for adoption at the January 4 meeting.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Varney. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Director Varney. I just wanted to ask a quick question. On page 185 of the e-Packet, though I believe it's page 1 of the Agenda Statement on this item, you know, in that statement, it brought up some of the title items on the presentation here, and one of them was some of the savings from that OPEB reduction that were more than adequate to fund those six positions, those critical positions at the top of the list of, I believe it was 70, that were mentioned originally. I have two questions on this. Is the sustainable reduction, I suppose, enough to perhaps help fund one of the other, what would that be, 64 positions then? I guess that's my first question. And secondly, if not, is there a timeline to do that in the future? As the city expands its services back to perhaps what the residents are looking for, I'm curious what the roadmap is going forward. 64 positions is a lot to cover, and, you know, having six of them is good, but if we have sustainable reductions in costs, perhaps we can use those to bear the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, Counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arco.
Resolved to introduce the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2021-22 fiscal year. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Arco?
Good job by all, first of all. So thank you, Mrs. Varney. I think that we all had a chance to digest this over the last couple of weeks, so I'm comfortable with what we're doing. I'm even more comfortable with the fact that we didn't raise taxes to do it. I have to mention that. It was something that we thought, you know, get, let's have some patience and see what happens at the end of the year, and it paid off, so I'm grateful for that. But the other question that I have is with the reduction in personal property taxes, so through the chair to Mrs. Varney. With the reduction that we're going to see in personal property taxes, how will this affect our budget next year?
Mrs. Varney.
So the reduction that we will probably see is in what's called our Tier 3 Personal Property Tax reimbursement. So there's, there's three different tiers of reimbursement. Tier 1 and Tier 2 basically replace our personal property tax and keep them at the 2014 levels. That amount is as guaranteed as it can be. It's easily estimable, and I include that in the budget as revenue to cover operating expenses. The Tier 3 reimbursement is highly, it's not estimable. It's in question every year. We really never know how much or if we're going to get it until we receive it in May. So I, along with, as far as I know, every other finance director in Michigan does not budget that to cover operating costs, because it is not guaranteed, and as we just are experiencing, can be easily taken away. So that, that is not used to cover ongoing operations. We have been using it to invest in capital, to invest in roads, to invest in facilities. One-time expenditures that when we receive the money in May, we use that to, you know, invest in capital. So it, it is a loss, it will be a loss, because again, we have been using it for things that are important, but it does not affect the operating budget.
Okay. I guess our job then is to start asking our legislatures, our legislators for a replacement of this funding, and hopefully, maybe we'll even see it through revenue sharing. But once again, the local municipalities are balancing the budget of the state. I mean, we're, so, well, it's, I think it's something that we need to be aware of, and we need to start working on now, because I think that elimination takes place in December of 2022, or is it, I believe?
My understanding is they held us, they're holding us harmless for one year, so the first budget it would affect for us is the 25, 26 budget.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further. A good job.
Counsel, any, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Could I see the slide again of the six personnel that we're hiring, please? So I know that every single one of these positions is necessary. You know, last budget, we were presented by all the department heads on, on why they need these individuals in their departments. We are woefully understaffed. Our employees do an amazing job with the staffing that we have. Having said that, last budget, I had moved that we hire another fire inspector. We are, not to, not to keep using this word over again, but we are woefully behind on our fire inspections. We are known as one of the safest cities in Michigan. That's because FBI ratings. But they only look at police statistics. We're supposed to inspect commercial buildings once every three years, and when I ask continuously, how far behind are we, all I ever get told is, we're way behind. We're so far behind. So I hope, you know, that we're hiring the six positions, to the gentleman's point about staffing, that we seriously consider hiring a fire inspector next budget to make sure that our city and its citizens and the people who work here remain safe. Outside of that, I want to say, Ms. Varney, you did an excellent job. Thank you very much for your presentation. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Anyone else? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, to the chair to Ms. Varney. I think that Mr. Matthews' question was actually a very good one. With OPEB increasing, could we further cut the transfer from the general fund into OPEB to pay for more positions?
Mrs. Varney.
So, so first of all, I do, I do believe that the cut to the OPEB contribution is sustainable. We received the valuation for a two-year period, so I already know that with 100% certainty that the reduction is sustainable for the current budget and the next budget. And the actuaries also project into the future, and their projections of the future actually show that the OPEB contribution will continue to go down. And again, part of that is, you know, because we have done such a great job, as I've shown the city and with council support, we've, we've over-contributed for many years and got us a large balance. So when you have a great year last year where we earned 30% return on all three of our plans, obviously, 30% on $100 million is a lot more than 30% on $50 million. So keeping that balance high, you know, helps us with our return. So, so I do believe that this is sustainable, and like every other sustainable reduction in expenditures, it can be used, you know, as part of the whole operational budget to try to fund other important priorities which are, you know, discussed during the budget process.
Well, I guess to put a finer point on the question, I guess what you're saying is, if I'm parsing that large paragraph of words, is you wouldn't want to make further reductions right now because of what the future may hold. Am I correct in parsing that?
I mean, my, right now, by over-contributing to OPEB, we've had a lot of success. This brings, this brings the OPEB contribution down to fund what we thought were the highest priority positions that were originally proposed in the budget, and to get rid of the use of fund balance, and to turn us around to a, I would, so as far as, I would like to leave it like that for this current year. If we reduced it anymore, we would either go into a negative fund balance or to fund other things. And then next year, you know, we are looking at a 3.3% property tax inflationary increase, but as we all know, costs of everything are going up way more than 3.3%. So being more conservative, I would prefer to wait to see how everything else comes together next year before we committed to adding additional expenses. And keeping in mind some of the things that we know are council priorities, and seeing if we can, you know, fit those in next year.
Okay. To go further than that, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Yanez. I believe that we do need another fire inspector here in Sterling Heights. I believe we desperately need a deputy chief of police here in Sterling Heights. I recently spoke with the chief of police, and he tells me that it's been a very tough year for him with everything, and he could use a little bit of help over there. So without objection from my colleagues, I'd like to prepare a budget amendment for both the deputy chief and a fire inspector for this budget. And we can have talk about that, I guess, the next meeting, because to me, I think these are two needs that I've been told are desperately in need, and I want to make sure that we are keeping our city as safe as possible. With that, that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Taylor?
Yeah. One second. So don't you have to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor, and then we would pass it at the following meeting?
Well, I just want the budget amendment prepared, but I can make the motion now if that's easier for you. I don't have anything in front of us to show with my colleagues.
I mean, we could do it either way, but if you bring up the amendment, if we bring up the amendment next week, can we vote to pass the ordinance with the amendment in it, or do we need two weeks with?
No. So just, to try to work this through. I know Ms. Varney's going to need time to figure out what those numbers are going to be. Normally, in our budget process, what we would do is bring forward a budget amendment at the next, you'd introduce it as is, and then at the next meeting, we would have an amendment proposed, and you'd vote on the amendment, and then the final ordinance. So that's how I would suggest we do it.
Okay. We can do that. Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez.
So if we, if we do it that way, and the amendment fails, then we lose both positions? So do we, would it be better off to have two amendments, one for each position?
Which two positions?
The police chief and the fire inspector.
I didn't know that you had asked for an amendment to...
I didn't know. I'm talking about Mr. Radke's.
I'm asking for one amendment for both.
One amendment for, okay.
One amendment for both.
Good enough.
Okay.
If we have no objection, then we'll have to prepare that.
Okay. Any objection, Council?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco.
My objection would be to hold off on, I don't see this for this particular budget year. I would be happy to look into this for the 2022-23 budget year. I have no problem doing that, but at this time, I think there's enough preparation that has gone into amending this budget to get to where we wanted to be in May, that we should just go forward with this as planned, and make sure that we include those positions for consideration in the next budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Any other objections?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes, I object as well. I think we're well into, you know, this document, and we are discussing the next budget in May. So I think, you know, there's no harm in waiting. We've gotten through the, yes, I understand their priorities, but I think that this should wait until the next budget discussion.
Mrs. Sirovsky.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Mrs. Varney. So I have a general question, because I know you don't have exact numbers, but if we were to introduce and then approve those two additional positions, what, how would we fund that?
Mrs. Varney.
Well, I mean, off the top of my head, it would either be a use of fund balance, or I would have to, you know, reduce another expenditure to offset it. I mean, those are the two options.
Okay. Thank you. I am in agreement that it's probably not the best time to do this. I wanted, I want to make sure that we can appropriately and properly fund and plan for those two positions. I know that they're definitely wanted and needed. I too spoke to the chief, and I, police and fire are my two biggest concerns when we can afford that. But at this time, I think that we, I agree that it's probably not the best timing for this, and I would rather wait for the next new full budget in May. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Council, any other objections?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
I don't know if it's the right time to do this, but I would like to see what Ms. Varney has to say, because if we don't add those positions until the next budget, I'd sure like to know the numbers and where we would get the funding from. So I would be in favor of taking a look at it, not to say that we're going to approve it, but I'd sure like to know what we're talking about. So I'm in favor of going ahead and getting the information to council so we know what we're dealing with. If we don't add them now, maybe we'll be able to work something out to add them in July.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Mr. Yanez, any objection?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. There's only three, so we'll proceed with the analysis and the budget amendment for the following council meeting at the, this is the introduction at the adoption meeting. Okay. I'll open it back up to general discussion. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on general discussion of this agenda item? Two and one's, two and one's. Mrs. Sirovsky.
I just, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So just in addition, congratulations to Ms. Varney and the, and your team. This is a very nice complete budget, and I'm very happy that we could bring in those positions that we did not really want to eliminate when initially we thought we'd have to raise taxes for them. If we do not have to raise the taxes and we have the funds, yay, that's exactly how we wanted to fund it. So very happy to see this, and if we can find a way to fund the other two positions, I do, I would, I'm, so I don't think it's the best timing, but I guess hearing about it doesn't hurt. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sirovsky. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt.
I just have a question through the chair to Mr. Kachubski. When we're voting on the First Amendment, is that with Mr. Radke's? Okay.
This is just the introduction.
Okay. So tonight, we're voting on the introduction of the First Amendment, and it doesn't matter the addition to this?
It's, we're voting on the motion as it was presented originally.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Anyone else? If not, thank you, as my colleague said, Mrs. Varney. Very good job putting this together. It's great to see that we're getting these positions funded. That was something that was important to all of us back in June, and glad we're seeing that through now. Do you know how it's coming along with the positions that were funded? Are we able to find employees? Are we going to find people who are going to work these jobs?
It's challenging. It, I mean, it's been challenging. Some of them have been filled, some of them are in the works, and some departments, for example, I mean, not to, but like assessing has turned out to be quite challenging to fill, just because there's not a lot of appraisers out there with the, you know, with the right credentials. It's definitely a challenging job market, to say the least.
Well, I understand that. I mean, I know, I know every business out there is feeling it, so it's, it's not surprising that we are too. In terms of the deputy chief position, I've spoken with our police chief, and I've spoken with other, other police officers and members of the police department and administration, and there is, I believe, a strong need for it right now. I don't think that that's, that's going to change much in six months from now or in four months from now, and I'm not sure that the financial position that the city is in is going to change much in four months or five months from now. So my preference would be to see that that's done. I think that the chief is asking for it. The chief believes that it is crucial to continuing to have the police department run effectively, and so I trust, he's done so much good for this city and this police department over these last several years, that I trust his judgment on that. And I know that everything in government moves a little bit slower than it does in the private sector. We've got to negotiate with the union, and we've got to figure out the testing, and we've got to do, jump through all these bureaucratic hoops, but I would say that our police department is, is the highest priority for not just our city council. I can only speak for myself, but I know my colleagues appear, feel the same way I do, and it's a very high priority for our residents, so I'd like to see that through without delay. So that's just my, my position on that. But with that being said, if there are no more discussions on this item, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Not, Council, we need a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Orchata. Am I saying that correctly?
Orjada.
Orjada.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Council. I had a question with regards to the pharmaceutical settlements with regards to the opioid crisis. I was curious how much the city is expecting to receive pursuant to that agreement. That's really all I had tonight, and Merry Christmas to you, too. Yeah.
Okay. $3.2 million paid out over 18 years, I believe. So, thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, Council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Arts Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, Council, is there anyone who has an appointment to the Arts Commission? This is a, there are two open positions. This is a council appointment. There are two different term-ending dates, one June 30, 2024, and one June 30, 2025. Anyone? Okay. I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to the January 4 city council meeting.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
My name is Bernard Martin. My address is 36503 Melbourne Drive, Sterling Heights. Been a citizen since 1979. I am currently the vice president of Fraternal Order of Police Associates Lodge 118, and currently the national president of the Fraternal Order of Police Associates nationwide. I was appalled by what I heard at Cops and Kids from the chief of police that this council passed a motion last month to put up three lightning bolts at our fallen officers' parks. I've been working on this proposal for over three years. I followed the chain of command, which I believe was the proper way of addressing this situation. And when I heard that this was passed, I felt really, really bad. I had meetings with Kyle. I had meetings with Mr. Taylor and Kyle in the foyer. I even talked to Mr. Radke when he came around knocking on doors for his city council. I tried to get meetings with Mr. Vanderpool, and I got referred back to the police chief and the fire chief, Chris Martin at the time. I had meetings with them, and I made my proposal because none of the FOP that I approached for two consecutive meetings approximately three years ago was in favor of lightning bolts. They wanted a more traditional memorial for the fallen police officer and the fire department that died for this city. I had several meetings throughout the chain. I even had two consecutive meetings, I said, with the FOP, and the retirees, oh my God, they just went off on this one. I had meetings with a handful of fire department. They are not in favor of the lightning bolts. They wanted something more traditional. And I figured over after these three years, I took the year off because of COVID, that I was getting back into it. I didn't think this was a rush job of getting this motion passed. I'm asking the city council if there's anything that they can do to hold this motion back and hold a dialogue with all the facts presented on this table for a fair and honorable memorial for our fallen officers in the fire department of this city. With that, like I conclude all my meetings nationwide, and I have seen many nationwide memorials, including the one in Washington, DC. Oh, yeah, by the fact, Leroy Amis, the marble slab that is out there, came from the police memorial in Washington, DC. That's how strong they felt about that memorial back then. So I was wondering if there's anything that the city council can do to hold off on the funding and the implementation of the fight of the lightning bolts, and to open up the dialogue again so we can come to a mutual understanding of what we believe should be presentable and honorable for our officers and fire department that died in this, in the city. With that, I thank you for your attendance. And if you want my phone number, Mr. Vanderpool has it, and so does the chief of police.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mr. Manning?
So I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I know that this is my first public appearance after the election, and I just want to say it's been a great year and thankful for it. And of course, although I think the results are going to turn out the way I expected, it came to the way you guys expected, but I just want to say it was a great year, great experience. I, you know, began to meet and know a lot of people in this great city, and I'm still thankful for living in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Not, close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Sure. Mayor, I can respond just briefly to Mr. Martin. First, I want to thank him for his good work. First, I want to thank him for his good work with the FOP and for his engagement with the city. I've had the privilege and opportunity to work with him over the years. And he's a very fine man and appreciate all that he represents. Public art is, is sometimes meant to cause some interpretation and, and different frames of mind and thought and so on. And in this particular case, I just wanted to reiterate what the sculptures stand for and all the different engagement that went into this from the Arts Commission and others involved in the departments. Each sculpture is reflective of a life tree, not a lightning bolt. That's the first time I heard that term. As it shows the changes in our lives and growth over time. They symbolize how life can change in an instant and speak to the ultimate sacrifice made by the fallen officers and firefighter. Each sculpture includes a sphere that represents the Sterling Heights community gathered around the officers and the firefighter as family. Each piece will include variations so that they're not the same. So that's kind of a description in a nutshell. But again, it's public art and it is subject to some interpretation. But I think when it's all said and done, Mr. Martin and so many others are going to be very proud of this public art in Sterling Heights. And I also wanted to thank the arts culture, the commission for the good work they did sifting through this and, and going through all the various designs. I think they worked very hard and in the end got the, the right choice. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kasubski, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counsel, any new business or reports for tonight? Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I will go first. So in, being that it is almost Christmas time, I will wish all the residents a Merry Christmas and a happy holidays to those of you that celebrate in other ways. And I do hope that you have a safe and happy new year. And so I wanted to get that out of the way because I have something that I think is extremely important I do want to mention. So I know that we have had a lot of information about Oxford High School, a lot of things going on. My, one of my employees and a very good friend of mine, her daughter goes to the school and was very good friends with one of the young men that died. And I counsel her every day. So I hear this and see this and live it every day. And this has affected both the young daughter, the family, the community, and all of us in some extent. But I live it every day with her. A little bit vicariously or a little bit disjointed, but I still have to help her get through this. It's very challenging and hard. But I wanted to bring to light something that is maybe a little bit of candlelight in the darkness. And that is that one of, multiple athletic directors have gotten together from the Catholic leagues to the public leagues, and they approached EA Graphics. EA Graphics is a company that is in Sterling Heights. It is owned by Robert Artemovich and his family. And they have agreed to print and sell T-shirts and sweatshirts and different types of outer gear that say Oxford Strong. And those are meant to raise money for the Oxford families in the community. They are donating 80% of the sales to that community. And the goal and the intent is for every single person who has any desire to represent and support that community, be able to do so, to wear them on February 4th at a time when there's a lot of many, many different sporting events. This is basically sporting intent, you know, supported by the sporting community of, of the high schools, but it's also for all of us. It's for the grandkids, the little kids, me, you, everybody. If we could find it in our hearts to at least if not buy and purchase one, to think of it and think of them and have goodwill. This is just a way to show that even though, as they said in this article, it's about being able to stand up together to combat that violence and to show that we have, we're trying to make a difference. Small thing, but if you continue to keep this in the conversation and not just let it go and let Christmas be, you know, overshadow it and not just remember, these families are very hurting and this is the worst time ever for this. I would encourage everyone who can to please support this. So EA Graphics, Sterling Heights business, been around for a very long time. They've supported us. They do a lot of printing. They do a lot of charitable work. And I would encourage you all to reach out to them. And if you could, purchase. And if not, the goodwill. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I too want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. It doesn't, we all celebrate differently. But I want you all to also have a healthy season. So I'm going to encourage everybody. If you haven't been vaccinated, please consider it. If you have been vaccinated, please go and get your booster and wear a mask in public. So I mean, I think those are all things that we can do. And the other thing is, is I've been invited to parties in this last couple of weeks that if you're not vaccinated, you're not welcome. So it's another thing to consider. So, but yes, I want everybody to have a safe holiday and I'm getting on the vaccine wagon because I, we're going into our third calendar year in another couple of weeks of COVID-19. We are all tired. So let's think of the common good and talk to your doctor if you're afraid to get a vaccination. And, you know, I talk to people that haven't gotten a vaccination for whatever reason and then I get a death notice for them. My mom's 92 years old. She was vaccinated, got a breakthrough case and she's doing very well. But last week at the doctor's office, they told her if she hadn't been vaccinated, she wouldn't have made it. So these are things that you have to consider. That yes, you might get vaccinated and you might have a breakthrough case, but you're going to live. You'll be able to stay home. You're not going to go to the hospital and be on a ventilator. So please, please have a safe and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else, counsel? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will piggyback on my colleagues and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season. You know, it's been a long, it feels intolerable now, 18 months, I think. It's just, it goes on, but you know, the holiday season is a time to be with family and friends and remember that we have it pretty good here in America compared to other places. So very happy holiday. With that, I have a couple of questions. One through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. In regards to the memorials and the Arts Commission, it was presented to, it was presented to counsel as the recommendation of the Arts Commission. Could we have a little bit more information about how the Arts Commission goes about their decision? Obviously, they have meetings and they, they vet various proposals and they put forward a recommendation to the city council. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Vanderpool?
Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Councilman Radke, you're correct. In many cases, requests for proposals are sent out with some design parameters and some ideas in mind just to kind of sow the seeds. And then the commission looks at proposals along with some input from our community relations department and other stakeholders as well. But generally speaking, that's the guideline. So they, well, it's not a rigid criteria. I mean, art is supposed to be in, in its own sense, you know, kind of general and to a great, to a great extent abstract in many ways. So we don't want to make it too rigid, but the RFP process has worked well in many cases.
Well, the reason I bring it up is just, you know, we have an Arts Commission just for this. For them to vet proposals, for them to bring us what they think is in the best interest of the city. And if I remember properly, we have a number of commissioners that come from different walks of life and different backgrounds on that committee to make these decisions. This is the first time hearing of anyone with an issue with memorial. So if there are other people who are unhappy with it, I would love to hear from them. But as it stands right now, I think this went through the proper process. I have no problem with memorial as it stands because why else have an Arts Commission if we're not going to follow their recommendation? Next, without objection, I would like the city council, the city administration to bring a new tattoo ordinance before us here to allow microblading. There is a report in our packet this week that we talked about several months ago to change the hours so that people could get this beauty procedure done in Sterling Heights. I see no problem with what the city administration recommended. And I'd ask them to write that as an ordinance that can come before us in maybe the next 60 days so that we can kind of align our ordinances with the communities around us. Without objection, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Hearing no objection, we'll proceed to have something presented by administration in 60 days? Okay. Very good.
Additionally, I want to talk about the recreation of the Human Rights Ordinance in Sterling Heights. It was actually, the Human Rights Ordinance was what brought me to city council originally way back in, is it 2012 now or 2013?
2013.
2013.
No, 2014 is when it passed.
But there's some, there's some lead up to it too. But that, the whole time period, 2013, 2014. And it's subsequently being repealed. I've made a promise to the LGBTQ community in Sterling Heights that we would bring this back for a passage to align us with both the county and a lot of other communities that have Human Rights Ordinance to prevent discrimination against people who are of the LGBTQ community. And I don't know how to start this process, Mr. Mayor. Should I make a motion for a new ordinance? Should I ask for the city administration to bring us back the old ordinance or what's the proper process?
You know, Mr. Kasubski, have you looked into this recently? Have you seen what other communities are doing? And does it, if you have, does it very much from what we did seven years ago?
I haven't looked into it as much. I'd like to have time to provide a report on what other communities have done. I will tell you that there is a current Supreme Court case pending that will be argued in early 2022 that will potentially make it a state issue and resolve it. I know that Dana Nessel will be arguing it personally. There are multiple amicus briefs that have been filed. So there is a headwind there. With respect to what other communities have done, I have not looked as closely as I should. And I'd be happy to do that. I know that the city itself has multiple rules in place and administrative procedures orders that have followed what you're proposing for ours, for the city itself. So that's in place as well. But if you'd like a report on what other communities have done since 2014, I'd be happy to look into it and provide that.
Well, I think, Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, thank you for allowing me to comment. In light of Councilman Radke's request, I would suggest the most prudent course that counsel may want to consider at this point is exactly what the city attorney said. Let us come back to you with a full report on number one, what was considered with city council, what was approved by city council initially, subsequently repealed. And then also a review of the court cases pending and also a summary of what we have done as an organization. It's been some time since council's had a chance to look at all that. And we can, we can report back to city council in short order on all of that.
How much time do you think you might need, Mr. Vanderpool?
Well, well, we're, for all intent and purposes, already into January and we've got strategic planning on the 25th. I think we could, I would ask for 60 days if counsel would allow us that time. But, you know, we could probably do it a little shorter time period.
Yeah, I mean, look, my, I said it before, my problem is you put this out into the warm weather. They'll go out and have warm weather to collect signatures to get it off the ballot. Look, here's what I'd say. I don't need the report. Don't care. I really don't. I can do the work myself over the next two weeks and I'll figure out. And then, and then we'll, we'll get something on the first, we can, can we get something on the first meeting in January?
That works for me, Mr. Mayor. If we can, if we, without objection, add it to the agenda so we can have an introduction and discuss it.
I don't see why we couldn't just, could we just pretty much do the exact same one we already did seven years ago?
Counsel wanted to.
So I say let's get the same one we had seven years ago. If you think we need to make any tweaks, you've got a couple of weeks to make some tweaks to it. And tee it up. Is there any objection to that?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski?
I, I'm not objecting, but I would like to see what the other communities have. I'd like our language to be in alignment with what they're doing.
Okay. We've got two weeks and I will do that research.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
First of all, I think all seven of us sitting here would vote to put this ordinance in place tonight. I don't think there's any of us sitting here that doesn't believe in that ordinance. It's what happens after we do it. And you know, do I want to sit here and listen to the ugliness that we did seven years ago? Because the same people are going to be in the same chairs with the same objections and they're going to get the same petition to put this on a ballot. And you know, I don't care how cold it is, they're going to get the signatures and you can't put an ordinance on the ballot. So let's come up with something that we can do and keep it in place.
Well, I'm not, I don't really disagree with that at all. My feeling is that I don't believe we're going to see a whole lot of major changes. I mean, we're talking about writing an ordinance that says you cannot discriminate against somebody in hiring or in housing based on their sexual orientation.
Or gender identity.
Or gender identity. I mean, yeah, it's not, there's, there's not that much more to it. I think we can move expeditiously on this. I really do. And, and I, I don't think you're wrong, Mrs. Zarco. You can't stop what's going to happen afterwards. No amount of reports from city administration and research from city attorneys are going to change that. So if they're going to get the signatures, then let them freeze their butts off doing it. That's my feeling.
Mayor Taylor, through the chair, Mayor. You know, you say that we could do this expeditiously, but should we do it expeditions? You know, we don't have to. I mean, we've got something in place. I'd like to wait even the Supreme Court decision. I mean, and see what happens there because it might make a difference in what we're trying to do with an ordinance. You know, I, like I said, I don't think there's any of us here that oppose doing this. Let's just be patient and do it the right way. And so that we don't have the controversy and so that it stays in place no matter what it is. And that's how I feel. I don't want to go through all this and find out that we have to rescind it again and have, you know, we should learn from, I don't want to call it a mistake because we did the right thing. But I just don't want to repeat of what we did before. Nothing further.
Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Well, first of all, you're right. We could probably pass this tonight. However, out of fairness to Mr. Kasubski and city administration, pushing it to the next meeting in, the first meeting in January, for goodness sake, this is the holidays. And you're going to push this, work on them along with an amendment to the, to the appropriations ordinance. And furthermore, like I said, in 2014, this is, I believe this is something that should be addressed at the federal or state level. And it's in the process of being addressed there. I have no problem sitting and listening. It was vile what we listened to. It was horrible what we listened to. And it was horrible the phone calls that my daughter took. And that's things that I won't forget. However, we need to do it right. And if, if the Supreme Court is dealing with it on a federal level and the state needs to deal with it on a state level, they're going to supersede what we do anyway. So I don't think there's a rush to get this in the January, the first meeting in January. And that's just my feeling. I'm not opposed to it. I just think that there's, there's no fire going on that we, that needs to be put out exactly the first week in January. So I think it needs to be dealt with at the federal and state level. Yes, we dealt with it at the local level and look where it got us. We had to rescind it. So I, I think the same group of people, the same folks will show up and they will go out there and get the petition signed. And that's their right to do. But I don't think we need to push this to the first meeting in January. I have nothing further.
Mrs. Kosky?
Through the chair to Mr. Kay here. When is that court case going to be decided? February or something?
Arguments, arguments will be in the spring, likely in April or May. Decision after that would come probably later in the year.
Later on in the year. What it will amount to is the Elliot Larson law will be changed, correct?
If they approve it, Mr. Kasubski?
It's about the interpretation of the law and whether or not the law as written includes gender identity and anti-discrimination in those forms. Yes. That's, it's an interpretation. It's not changing the law. It's, it would be making sure that it's It would be making sure that it's interpreted in that manner.
Okay. And if they decide that it does include what we're trying to achieve, wouldn't that solve all of our issues? If the opinion comes in that it does include the...
The short answer is yes.
Yes. So then we wouldn't even need it. We wouldn't need another ordinance, correct?
It would, the state law would trump anything that local laws would do in that regard.
Yeah, that's exactly what I thought. I would like to wait and see how this plays out and not, like my colleagues have said, we'd all vote in favor of it, but I don't want a repeat of what we went through. So I would just as soon wait on this a little while and see what happens. In regard to the memorial that was brought up tonight, in our backup material for the last meeting, there were pictures and there was...
I'll let her know. We'll get back on track.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Do you still want the floor?
We still had the floor for that subject.
Mrs. Koski, Mr. Radke has the floor. I'm asking for objections. You've lodged yours. Let me get through that and then give him back the floor, and then I'll come back to you. Any other objections to this proposal?
I don't have an objection, but I'd like to speak on this proposal. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. How do our city practices APOs, is that correct, line up in regards to an ordinance like this? How are we as an entity in regards to those rights that Mr. Radke is talking about?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Yanez, with respect to best practices in this area, all of our administrative procedures and policy orders have been revised. They were years ago when this first came, when the ordinance for the community-wide protection came about. Around that time, we updated all of our internal policies and procedures to prohibit any sort of discrimination, which we already had, but to include sexual orientation in the LGBTQ plus community. So in that respect, and around about the same time, the county did the exact same thing. So we are certainly aligned with best practices in that area as an organization.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that whatever you choose to do, I support.
Okay. Thank you. Any other objection? Okay. Hearing none. We've got four people who have not objected to proceeding with an ordinance at the January 4th meeting. I think it's fair to say that we can present something, the administration can present something very similar to what we already voted on, and I will pledge that over the next week or so, I'll scour for the cities that have passed something recently to see how it compares and offer any suggestions that might. And then at the meeting on the January 4th, there could be amendments offered by council members, right? Which could make its way into whatever ends up being adopted. So...
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco.
Who were the four people that said January 4th was good?
So myself, Mr. Radke, Mr. Yanez, and I didn't hear an objection from Mrs. Sarowski about proceeding this way. So with those four, we'll move forward. And I'll be honest, I mean, maybe I'm just naive, but I'm optimistic that a lot has changed in seven years. And while maybe not everybody's minds have been changed, I think a lot of minds on this subject have been changed. And I think a lot of people who put their face on TV saying the vile, awful things that they said seven years ago, even if their mind hasn't changed, I don't think they'd necessarily want to do that now. We're in a much more, we're in a world where those sorts of things go viral, information gets spread quickly, and at the end of the day, most of these rumors and most of these innuendos about bathroom assaults have all been debunked. It's a bunch of nonsense. It's just something that people can hang on to to say, well, let's just throw the whole thing out because of this boogeyman about bathroom assaults. It's ridiculous. So I'm optimistic that this isn't going to turn into any sort of a big circus. I'm optimistic that we might have a crowd like this and that it'll get through without nearly the fanfare that it had seven years ago. Now, maybe I am being naive, but even if it does get undone by whatever the state does, and hopefully it does, so that it's uniform across the state, that's not any reason for me. You know, I'm not going to stop doing things just because the state might someday do something different. Mr. Radke, anything more?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo your comments. This was an issue that brought me here to the council chambers before I sat up here. It's an issue that's long overdue to be corrected. I think there's been a sea change in society since 2013 till now, both by the U.S. Supreme Court, by regular folks, and I also think our city has changed a bit since 2013, too. I think that this will pass, and I'm not naive enough to believe that there will not be some objections. But I think those people are few and far between. They are vile, but they're few and far between, and they are increasingly isolated in this society. And I'm proud to bring this before the city because it's this kind of city I want to live in. And I made those promises before the last election. I was reelected, and I will do it. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. Mrs. Koski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regard to the memorial, in our backup material at the last meeting, I think there were some photos and some information. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, is there any way that that could be put on the website that if there are people out there that are concerned about it looking like a thunderbolt, that they can actually look at the pictures and read the information indicating that each memorial would be a little bit different? Just to let them know what the Art Commission is doing, if that would be possible. Other than that, I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Healthy New Year, and please, stay safe, stay healthy. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Koski. Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor. Just short and sweet, everyone have a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a very healthy and Happy New Year. Nothing further.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yanez.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to thank City Administration for allowing me to browbeat them constantly on snow emergencies, and I really do appreciate the work that they put in to the new policy. I think it will be effective. I know that we keep saying the percentages are small, but the numbers are large. And if we can stop from destroying property, making it safe for our snowplow drivers, making sure that people's streets are getting properly plowed and cleared, I think we all win on that. So thank you to the administration for your work on the snow emergencies. As far as the Police Officer and Firefighter Memorial, Mr. Martin came here. He's obviously very upset. I, you know, I'm really bothered by this. I know when we did the mural on the police station, the police officers were heavily involved. They went down to the DIA, they did the tiles, they had a lot of input on that, and I'm curious how much input the police officers and firefighters had for these current memorials, which we voted to fund. I know as strategic planning, I am going to bring up that we should invest in a memorial in our Veterans Courtyard there for those who served in Iraq and Afghanistan. And I certainly hope that if we move forward with that, veterans from Iraq and Afghanistan, the Iraq and, both Iraq wars and the Afghanistan war, have some sort of input on what a memorial like that would look like. So I certainly hope that if we're doing any kind of memorial for any certain kind of group or organization, that we get input from that group or organization. You're right, art is subjective. Those are probably not my cup of tea, but I just think if we're doing Police Officer and Firefighter Memorial, we should have plenty of input from those folks. And then having said that, I'll end on a happy note. Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, whatever holiday you celebrate. I appreciate everybody I serve with here on this council. I appreciate all the citizens who live here and pay the bills, all those who call me with a problem. Hopefully, I've got your problems fixed, and I know that we have a great staff that I rely on to help fix those problems. And we go into 2022, and I hope it's a happy and prosperous and better New Year for every, and maybe COVID-free by the end of the year. Who knows? Thank you.
Let's hope. So thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for the comments tonight, and thank you for coming out to participate. I hope everyone out here in the audience and at home has a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you back here on January 4th, 2022. That'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
The movement and support, no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.